I'll call this meeting to order. Finance Claims Budget and Audit Committee. First thing on the agenda is the 2026 Tax Budget. If you have any updates, I know Ms. Franz and I were not able to attend and you had invited us, but any updates you want to give?
We had our first meeting last week and Brad, Bradley Schwartz from the Financial Recovery Plan Commission joined us. And if we were talking to him about it, maybe that he might join us virtually. So if moving the time back or a different day would work for you and Emily, we're, I know you were out of town, I think.
Yeah, that was the only reason.
Yeah, so, but I know Ms. Gurness had a conflict with you. So if we can move time back, tell me what time you think, maybe 3:34, different day or whatever, then we'll just resend out the invitation and we'll change the time.
Okay.
And, you know, if it is easier for you to jump on virtually, that's, that's fine as well. But also, and then Mary's been working on it. Yeah, so she can, they can hear her too.
On Saturday, I sent everybody the current version of the tax budget. So just so that, so for a couple of things, I'm, the county did not give us the current version, but I found a 2024 version. So I've been trying to update it and make sure that has, it matches the PDF we got from the county. And I started, it required input of the FRP, which I did, that got approved by the county. And so all the numbers were good. So I uploaded the FRP and I started copying and pasting in all the applicable tabs. So kind of focused on the first expenses. The revenues, I kind of got started a little bit on, and then the other pieces, I'm learning where to pull the numbers from. But I at least wanted everyone here to see how it's being created. And then unfortunately, we also have this issue with Excel and formulas linking to other different tabs in the thing. So it would probably be helpful to have other sets of eyes on this, you know, like as it's being updated, to making sure we've got numbers in the right place and formulas set up correctly. And then if you have any questions as we're creating it, again, this is my first time too. So it'll probably be learning for all of us, but I mean, I think I got a good start on it. I don't know if you have any questions based on what you might have seen so far?
Yeah, I guess, thank you for your efforts on this. It's obviously a pretty hefty spreadsheet. I guess something that, so.
And just to clarify, I think the local government services provided this, kind of based on the instructions on the first page or on the first tab. It doesn't look like it was created by Marcus. It seems like it was provided to us.
Got it, okay. Yeah, so I think like looking through this, because there's, I don't know, a dozen or so like sheets within it. And I guess my question would be like, what is, is the whole thing the ultimate deliverable? Is there a certain tab or two that are more important?
I think it's labeled based on the PDF. So like Exhibit 1 matches to the PDF Exhibit 1. So I'm kind of using the PDF, which I got and forwarded to everyone. So this is what we know it needs to look like at the end. So there are going to be some input tabs that flow through to create those exhibits. So we'll just be printing those off. And I think they're color coded as to what's actually going to be submitted to the county versus what's just input and flowing through to the different parts. My hope is that, you know, like by getting this early, you guys can see how it's being created and hopefully fewer questions as, as it's being.
Yeah. Something else that I wanted to ask about, so I noticed on some of these, like where it has, so in this case, it's like GF revenue is the, is the sheet. So it has actual revenues, 23, actual revenues, 24, then has estimated for 25 and 26. But then the, some of the items that are like actuals in 24, or in previous years, we'll say, like there's no current like estimate for that, for those.
Well, I think, because I was mostly focused on the expenditures, because I could easily follow the tabs and the formulas for that. The revenues I got started on.
Okay.
There are revenues in the FRP, but what I don't have is a breakdown of what category they fall in.
Okay.
So for example, when we create the FRP budget, you know, it's the mayor's office, the mayor's clerk, the police, the fire, recreation.
On the expenditure side?
Right. And what happens is, is those formulas are created to then translate to how the, to the breakdown. So the breakdown is security. So probably police and fire, the formulas trigger all the police, fire and other security type to flow into security. Recreation, I think flows into leisure type activities. So there's going to be something similar to the revenue where we have these FRP revenues, but I don't have the breakdown yet as to what categories on that revenue tab, the GF revenue tab, to split it out. But I do have the totals from the FRP.
Got it, okay. Thank you for that.
Yeah, and I, I plan to attend tomorrow, whatever time it is. I'm basically available anytime after about 3:00ish on Wednesdays, but I'll defer to people who have conflicts and especially in the afternoon, my schedule's pretty flexible.
Yeah, this week, my afternoon schedule is flexible, so I could leave Audrey at home and bring her here.
Oh, she would love that. But yeah, and we can maybe figure out a time that works for people then tomorrow.
And I think moving forward, I think moving forward, I think Mr. Schwartz, we're just gonna have him check in virtually. He works way over by the airport.
Oh, yeah, that's a drive.
Yes.
Especially that time of day.
Yes, it's not ideal for him. So, but it was just more of a preliminary meeting, kind of discuss what we'd like to do. And at that time, you know, the county, I think, approved it on 20th, 19th or 20th?
20, well, I called them the 21st to confirm they passed it.
To confirm, and then, then we were able to, we had the right information available so then we could get started. So less than a week here, plus the holiday and the weekend.
Yeah.
So, but still a very solid effort with the, with the expenditures. And if we can move as quickly with the revenues, then we can start diving into it a little bit and getting real in-depth and hopefully get this done by, I think it's the 10th is our first meeting?
The first meeting in June is?
I want to say it's.
It is the 10th, yes, my sister's birthday.
Yeah, so that's our ultimate goal. So, and then we'll be able to meet tomorrow and then the 4th. So have a couple more meetings prior to that meeting as well. So a lot of information, solid effort from Mary compiling the expenditures and starting on the revenue.
And then also, I think, Brad Schwartz appreciated because they, he, they don't get it until it's all the way at the end. So I think he really appreciated being brought in at the first stages, because this, the tax budget we're working on will eventually become the FRP budget he gets.
Yeah.
So I think that was very, I think he appreciated that, yeah.
That's our intention, is to try and get things in front of you as quickly as possible. Then as we're moving through it, we can work with it together. And, you know, not only this, but, you know, other things that we're working on with the, with the finance committee. And then we can email it to you and you can review it as we're developing, and then, then we can ask questions like we're doing, we're doing here tonight.
And one of the things that I noted, and I'm sure you guys are on this, was that the, unlike the instruction sheet, it suggests sort of the last meeting in June or the first meeting in July. And so in our case, it seems like that'll be July 8th would be the, the meeting. But it does note that sort of before that passage meeting, that it needs to be like 10 days, it needs to be sort of public notice of the draft thing 10 days ahead of time.
Correct.
So that would seem to be.
Yeah, we'll have to adjust those.
Yeah, like June 27th is sort of when we would have to approximately do that. So I just wanted to call that, that bit out. And then, Mary, if I may, like, is it, is it fair to say that the, the, like, execution of this deliverable is more about, let's say, like transposing existing numbers at this point versus like coming up with or calculating like net new numbers?
It's a little hard to tell, because as I was, as I was like reading the instructions, I don't know if it's a little bit different because we're in fiscal emergency, whereas if we weren't, it might, we might not, might not necessarily be tied to the FRP as much.
Okay.
But that's one thing I did want to reach out to Anna Mary about to make sure that I'm filling this out correctly and that we are supposed to use the FRP numbers without deviating yet. So maybe, maybe we use FRP numbers now for this initial tax budget, because half of it's going to be estimated anyway. And then, you know, you know, like as we move closer to December, that's when we actually start making the changes, the more information we get.
I'm trying to remember last year. It seems like that's something that we did last year, but it's hard to remember.
Anything else on the 26 Tax Budget?
I think that's everything that we have right now. You know, we're in the, in the beginning here, so we'll have more the next time. And also, we might want to have another finance committee meeting prior to the second meeting in June.
Okay.
To, you know, make sure that we're, we're in alignment here and give you another chance for us all to sit down as a group and go over it as well.
Would it be, could we just make that appointment now?
I'm just trying in my mind, I didn't want to get too far ahead of myself, maybe, you know, the next couple of days for us to evaluate the, the revenue side and then give more little, estimate on, estimate on the time. And then we can maybe pull that in a couple of weeks. That's what I'm thinking, maybe do it on the 10th, talk about it on the 10th. If it's a, to get, that's our intention, is trying to get the first reading by the 10th. Maybe if we had the finance committee prior to that, that might just flow a little, little easier, I think.
So everybody could keep their calendar open, if possible, for the, June 10th is our first council meeting of that month.
Correct.
Of next month.
So we can schedule something for 6:30?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll put that in the notes.
Tentatively.
Yes.
I'm putting that in my calendar, just so I have it.
Yeah. All right. As if that wasn't enough, do you have any other reports to give from the audit of office?
Actually, we do. I think Mary and I were talking late this afternoon as the ordinance. Forgive me, just a second. I don't see that.
I'm not sure. Well, in case it gets added before. So Noah came to me, I guess, in the, the FRP, what looks like happened was, and this is all speculation on my part, in the 2.3 million was needed for the Montgomery Road project. In what I saw, when I, the, the beginning of the April FRP, it was almost 3 million, but then for that budgeted line item in the streets. And then when the FRP actually passed, it was in, down to 2.3. There was a road project that was paid early, that was about 680 some thousand. So there's a shortage now with the FRP, because what I think happened is in like, in the front piece of the, you know, like the front document, it said, you know, we need 2.4, or almost 3 million for this, but in the supporting documentation, it only had the 2.3 or 2.4. And when the numbers went, matched to equal 2.3, I think they missed the fact that 680 some thousand got pre, paid early, earlier than expected, or something to that effect. So the Safety Service Director came to me and we were looking through to see where there was funding sources to make up this difference so that the Montgomery Road project does not get stalled. And so we found several funding sources. So when a council first passed for the project, we had one funding source, which was under general fund streets. And now it's going to be expanded to other funding sources, but all capital outlay. So, so it'll be a mixture of the original source, the bulk of it, like 1.5 million almost, but then three funding sources, Central Park TIF, the public lands and buildings, and then the street fund itself. So we're essentially expanding the number of funds that can be used to fund this. I, I don't know if that's going to be.
It is on.
It is on the agenda.
That was on the agenda tonight.
We just got an amendment at like 1:30.
Okay, yeah, I think I got that notice.
We have the new agenda and it has those, those four funds. So it's just amending something we passed two meetings ago.
Right.
Again, it's all speculation on my part. We had to analyze things quickly because otherwise this puts the Montgomery Road project on hold. And Noah and I went through it and I talked to Ken, the funding sources seemed, you know, like, you know, legitimate funding sources, various, what it means is other projects will be put on hold or delayed. So that, I just wanted to explain a little bit about that coming up, because that happened.
Yeah, that's good, because we're gonna.
I figured you'd probably ask.
Yeah. Yes, I know the, the Central Park, the, the road that it's on.
Yeah, so the Central Park TIF has a certain amount allotted for improvements.
I think it makes sense. It's going to be benefited by the improvements, like that, that TIF area, it's like right there.
Right. And it, because TIF amounts are not like concrete.
Right.
They're estimated. That's why we added three different funding sources, so public lands and the street fund itself, and the, the 2002 street fund. So those three funds are going to be added. The exact amounts are still being determined, depending on how much actual TIF funds we have available, which Pat Woodside, they were contacted to see like what, what's the actual available, true available source, or total that's available for infrastructure.
Thank you guys for bringing that up, just to have a little extra discussion about it, you know, tonight.
Yeah, that's very helpful.
Yeah, I want to make sure that you, you know, have full disclosure on that and explanation before, you know, because now you got it late, because it wasn't on here, but we were confident it was going to be on here, so we wanted to make sure that you were fully up to speed on.
Yeah, that's a lot of money to, in theory, suddenly spring on us, so it's helpful to have that communicated.
Mr. Councilman Gertner?
I'm gonna call him the treasurer.
Thank you so much, yes, thank you so much, I appreciate it. I just had a couple of quick questions about that. Do you know, so is any part of that 2.3 million dollars, was that to be like reimbursed later? Do you want to know? I mean, this is really a question probably for more for Noah, so it's okay if you don't know it, but I just didn't know if you were aware, like, is that, or is that, is the city's like portioned 2.3 million, or is it that we're spending 2.3 million, but then we're going to get reimbursed later in some way for part of that? And I don't know, but the answer to that.
The, the total's 4.6, the, and the city's going to get reimbursed for 2.3.
Okay, so 4.6, so we are on the hook for 2.3 of the total.
Yes. So that's why it was urgent to get additional funding sources for that.
Gotcha. Yeah, and I'd say.
That's good to bring up.
Yeah, and I'd just say, like, just to kind of comment in general, like, you know, it is unfortunate to have that, whatever happened, happened there. If we were not in fiscal emergency, like, we're, the, our budget is in such an extremely healthy place that we literally just pass an ordinance to, like, we pass the ordinance and be done with it and good to go. And there, that the reason why they're having to, you know, jumble around some of this money and things is because once we pass that fiscal emergency plan, I mean, Anna Mary made it very clear that she was not going to entertain amendments when things came up, because she was upset at us. So it's just another, because she was upset about, you know, I guess, the mayor's attitude throughout the process, which I do support the mayor on a lot of his concerns he had with the process. But just long story short, though, is just, this is just another reason why getting out of fiscal emergency is like, be helpful to the city, because when, you know, we could just appropriate extra dollars to that capital expense, street, you know, street key and the general fund, instead of having to then go and find extra money in public lands and buildings and the, in the Central Park TIF, although the Central Park TIF, that's an amazing thing to do, because it is, that's basically money that is extra in the TIF fund, so, or assumably it's extra. So it's good that the city and the surrounding areas is going to be able to benefit from that, being able to use that. But just in general, just kind of, I know we're, we're working as hard as we can to get out of this thing, but this would be much less of an issue if we were not in it.
It's good to know that we're in a healthier place than paperwork says, not that the state's paperwork says.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, it's, and Tim will talk about that in a minute, you know, when we talk about the finance or the tax department, but yeah, I would agree.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, we have just a couple of quick things. I'll make it quick. Mary is working expeditiously on the P Card manual. We've made very good progress on that, and our intention is to get that to you hopefully next, maybe next, maybe June 10th or, or June 24th.
I wasn't sure, the one question I had was, I wasn't sure like if you wanted, how soon you wanted to be involved in the projects, similar to the 2026 Tax Budget. Do you want to be involved, I mean, once a solid draft is ready and then provide input? Or do you want to receive it after we've gone and met with all the departments and pretty much finalized it?
Any feedback from members?
I mean, it would be good, maybe a more final version, just because that way, if we point out things that we think are errors, they're actually more likely to be a use, of use to you, rather than something you just haven't gotten to yet. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, my opinion, just my opinion, is that I don't want to micromanage you on this manual. The, the tax budget is such a big deal and for transparency sake, absolutely, but this is your field, you're experts in this. I would be happy to look at it near the end of the process.
Okay.
But I appreciate you bringing it to us now.
Yeah, we're gonna come to you with a 20-page manual and I don't want to throw it on, you know, give it to you.
That's fair.
On a Friday and you gotta vote on it on a Tuesday, so just a little heads up.
Yeah.
And we don't want to anticipate, I mean, this is not going to be an emergency thing either, that it's going to go through all, all readings.
Well, I think if you present it to us here in the meeting and give us the overview of it, that gives us, I think, some expertise to ask some questions about it, and then we could send it to council, so I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you for that.
No, I just didn't want to get too far into it, only to find out, oh, I wish I'd have been involved earlier.
I, I really appreciate you bringing it up now. Transparency is excellent here.
Yeah, so it's coming your way.
Yeah. Do you have anything else?
I think that's, that's it.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Thank you.
All right. I'll ask Mr. Wagers, do you have anything, or Mr. Bonsell, do you have anything, any reports?
Thank you. Good evening. I gave you guys a copy of the current, to date, income tax receipt summary. We usually don't give you preliminary numbers, however, with the way that April looked, it was maybe a little bit more needed this time around. So, you know, we lost, we lost some processing time in, in April. You'll see. You'll see, you know, a pretty, pretty big deficit there. Quickly made that back up in May, so they did, they did wash each other. You'll see where we where we set total at this time last year, just over 9.5, where we set today at 10.9. So we've still got a few days left in the month. I mean, it's not going to grow really much more than that, but, you know, keeps us on track and then we pretty much estimate that we'll maintain this overage until the end of the year. So, you know, November, December, we'll see if we get to keep it all and it's going to roll over. It'll really kind of depend on our, on our, on our final stuff coming in in December from the Ohio Business Gateway. But it, it looks good now and yes, we definitely expect to to keep it running. We're working on some staffing right now, so I know Lori has had a couple of people scheduled to take an exam today. And then I believe she has a couple more scheduled for later on in this week. So we're, we have a couple of positions open and available that we're going to try to get filled. It's going to help us, you know, get the the processing done for the 2025 tax year, 24 tax year, I'm sorry. Estimates just went out on Friday, so people may start to see those start popping up in their mailboxes here in the next couple of days. We sent out about, I don't know, just over 450 of them. We expected to be a little closer to like 600, like I said, with staffing and and just getting, getting everything processed and put in, it's, it's kind of put a little lag in there. But we will hopefully catch all that up on on third quarter. And then, you know, a lot of our folks have accountants and tax preparers that are actually putting together their, you know, estimated payment forms and stuff. So not everybody uses ours, it is just a courtesy, but we we do like to provide that courtesy as as much as we can. About all like that.
So just to put it in super plain talk, we have more income than we anticipated.
We are over our estimate as of current. Yes, sir.
And are you, you're still down three tax clerks right now or just two?
Yeah, we're, we're down two tax, two classes, tax clerks at the moment.
Anything else from the Treasurer's office?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that was a key thing when we were talking about the FRP was that you would estimate it conservatively for income. So that's, that's a extra positive thing.
So we actually did a pretty substantial increase in these past estimates. We we increased over the previous five-year plan by 1.25 million, starting in 2025. We maintained the the residual 2% increase going for the next five years. But yeah, even even conservatively, Anna Mary really wanted us to get closer to what our actuals were. You know, we, there, there's never really been a good baseline. You know, our, our compliance rates aren't really there for there to be a good baseline. So until, you know, we can kind of get there plateau and even potentially see somewhat of a downward trend, you know, this is kind of what we get. So we, we kind of maintain conservative that way. You guys aren't appropriating something that we're not going to end up receiving. And then, you know, at the same time, it kind of helps us build for the future.
Yeah, and the other thing just to note, I mean, so the reason why, I mean, the the biggest growth in here is the net profit tax. So last year, at this time, or at the end of May 31st, we had, you know, 1.34 million dollars in net profit tax collected. In 2025, it's 2.5 million. So that's like the vast majority of the jump. I mean, there is, there is a jump, though, in withholding, so, you know, a little bit over 100,000 and there's about 200,000 or 150,000 or so jump in individual collections. But the net profit was, I mean, that was almost double what we received, what we received last year. So, you know, it's more work to go into that, but I mean, it's, we, there's really no way for us to predict, predict some of that. And that, and that's why we, in general, we're a little bit more conservative in our estimates because so many of these net profit payments, we may get no payments one year, but then the next year we might get, you know, a million dollars. I mean, that's actually has happened. And and I'm not saying it's what's going on this exactly this year, but that is, the net profit is just very unpredictable in general. So it could be that next year, instead of, at this time next year, instead of 2.5 million, it could be 1.8. I mean, it's, it's a lot more, it's a lot harder to predict than withholdings because employee, employers usually do not change the number of employees they have as dramatically as we see with their profits.
And net profit, correct me please.
Yeah.
Comes from business income.
Yeah, absolutely. So it's basically just, you know, when businesses, you know, file their taxes, and it's definitely more complicated than this, but it's just, yeah, it's that we have a, our 2% earnings tax extends also to earnings that businesses generate in the city of Norwood. You don't have to just be headquartered here. It could be that you have a, you know, like, there can be net profit tax for having a shop at Ripwood, for example. There's a formula that Ohio has that, you know, is used to calculate that, but, so anyways, yes, but that is worth business profits.
Thank you.
Yeah, and and so looking at these, let's call it right now, 25 total year-to-date, is it 10.9 million? When I look at sort of like last year's actuals for '24 and see this like 22,000 or 22,698,000 number, like, is that, is that kind of what we're pacing towards, like annually? That's, that's kind of the goal is to be at that, let's, let's call it for round number sake, about 22.7 million, something like that. So when I see this, this 10-9 number basically saying like we're halfway sort of to our estimate for the year, is that, is that all fair?
I think, I think what we're thinking is that we're going to maintain, like, I think that we're going to maintain, you know, somewhere between a million and this 1.4 million surplus throughout the year. So that's our current thoughts now. We don't, I don't see, it's not going to end the year as a 15% growth. It's 15% now, but I think if you, the rest of the year is relatively flat, then, you know, that might be 7% or 8% or whatever. But I would, that's what I would estimate. And that's about what we achieved year over year last year. They made it about 7% over. Do you have any other?
Current estimates for the FRP for for 2025 were 22.2750, I believe, is is what we put in. So we took it up to the actual from last year plus a little more. And then, yeah, we we fully expect to to reach that and hopefully surpass it a little bit.
Yeah, so that, and and thank you for answering that. And yeah, just in general, you know, thank you for the the great work and, you know, obviously, the, of the, let's say, $30 million that the city brings in every year, you know, this office is the clear majority of that. So thank you for your, you know, great work.
Yep, absolutely. And I will note too, so we don't have the bank reconciliations, and I'm just fully transparent here, the bank reconciliations are not here to present, so March and April both need to be presented to you all. March is pretty much done, April they're working on, but it was my direction that the, Ava, who does our, she's our lead tax clerk, but she also does the bank reconciliations that, with us being down the two tax clerks, she just has been focusing on helping to keep the office afloat. And frankly, like, that's just where we're at right now when we're down. So it'll likely in June or July, we'll have a kind of a catch-up where you'll get two or three of the bank reconciliations together. So I just wanted you all to know where those were.
Yeah, she, it went fully back to bank reconciliations today. So we're, she, she started back on that. You know, we kind of pooled resources from the Treasury Department to to fill up the the tax department to get through the kind of the volume that was coming in with payments made. But today she, she moved back over to bank reconciliations. So hopefully, you know, here soon, we'll have you guys caught back up to date and we'll present that to you.
Thank you. Anything else from the Treasurer's office?
Sure.
Thank you very much. We have two other items on the agenda. One is probably just information right now. There, Ms. Jaeger found that we had 11 missed payments for our.
Quarterly filings.
Yeah. So if you guys didn't see that email or just for the public record, we're, help correct me, we're supposed to file quarterly payments to Ohio Jobs and Family Services for our wages here within the city?
Quarterly filings, so we report to them what our quarterly wages are. And so what happened was there was 11, the last one that was filed in the second quarter of 2021, those got, and then there was like 11 missed ones, and then until June of 2024, I think the filings got caught. And so each filing caused a $1,000, the file fee plus interest. So it's just a matter of reporting wages for owner-employed to Department of General Services.
And we had a surprise sudden bill that had to be due, so there was a, some accounting work had to be done there. Oh, go ahead.
No, but as I say, so the total of about 14,000 last June, and so I reached out to the company and get them to know that to report to them. And so, hey, I provided them some initial documentation, but they wanted more, like a little bit more research into it. And for the financial statements, another deadlines I passed, so research and self-help for that, and they replied with that. So it's on hold until we get, like, the tax that I get and the financial statements, but at least they're aware of it and that we disclosed it.
Right. Well, and if nothing else, I appreciate the fact that you caught it and that you were on, on, on par with your job. So I appreciate that. Any other discussion on that matter?
Is, is the 14,000 number a when at this point, or is it an if at this point? Like, is there any chance that it gets reduced or goes away, or is it?
Well, basically, the way that the Secretary of State planned it, meaning they want to gather all the information, so it's possible they'll actually need to interview Marcus because one of the questions to me is why, why did they file?
Why were 11 of them filed so late? Well, I don't know that, that was a year ago. So I suspect they're going to reach out to him to get answers to some of the questions. And then, once they gather all the information, they will provide it to their legal team and then their legal team will then decide if it needs to move on to a potential finding for recovery. So they would then determine that. But at least, and those are associated with the person, so they would need to identify who was responsible for filing them and that they did not have a valid reason for not filing them, et cetera. So it has to be, it's not just, oh, somebody was sick or some, you know, like, there could be valid reasons for doing things late and incurring things, but there are obviously not good reasons and that's what they need to determine. And then, then the finding for recovery would be associated with the person primarily responsible and then they would owe the funds back to the city. Yep, like if it goes that far.
Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Anything else? In terms of claims, it was my mistake, I thought we had some claims available, but we did not, so that does not need to be on the agenda for tonight. Any other business?
I'll plan to see you tomorrow at 3:00, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, 10:00 is right now.
For tomorrow at least.
Yeah, I can do three tomorrow.
You can do three tomorrow? Okay, we'll leave it first of all and then we'll work to try and make it more powerful.
So make sure I got it in my calendar correctly.
So is that, is that in place of the usual 4 to 5 one?
No.
It's in addition to?
In addition to, yeah.
Okay. And then, just to make sure I've got it right for June, so for both the 10th and the 24th, we're meeting preceding regular scheduled council meetings. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's. We're tentatively preparing for June 10th.
Yeah. Okay, but then the 24th would be our natural.
Yeah.
Correct. I wanted to sneak one in on you.
Yeah, appreciate that. And is it, is the intention for these meetings to be at 6 or 6:30? Because I thought there's been a little confusion about that.
It was sent out to, it was requested to be.
Okay.
And how about this, I will text everybody personally if it needs to move to 6.
All right, so 6:30 on the June 10th and 24th?
Yeah.
Yep. And, yeah, we'll double check and make sure it's the correct time.
Yeah. We had a little trouble getting the agenda out on Friday.
Oh, yeah, with the Memorial Day.
Yeah.
And you, just one thing to note, so the July meeting, you may, I think at council, you all have to make a decision, but in the roles of council, there's, it's considered a summer holiday, the second meeting in July, because.
Correct.
We always have the parade that day, but with the parade being on Friday, you know, you all may decide, I think Joe is probably going to bring it up tonight, but you all may decide to be anyways or just to keep it a summer holiday and.
Oh, that's right.
And not meet, so it could be that, you know, it could be twice in June to get off in July, or you can move it earlier, but I just want to make sure you knew.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, that's good to keep in mind for the first meeting. It may depend on what we have, if there's like appropriations that need to be changed.
Yeah. All right. Anything else? All right, thank you for your time. We'll call this meeting to close.
Thank you.